Okay, it is Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, minutes for reports received and filed?
Yes, the county treasurer reported their November fees, December fees for '21.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports upcoming meetings and events.
We got a HBA board meeting, planning commission meeting, HBA general membership meeting Wednesday. I think there's a chief's meeting Thursday.
Yep.
Where's that one at, Sheriff?
It's gonna be at Monticello Fire Station.
Okay. Quarterly reports are due Friday. Monday's a holiday, right? So we gotta have anything that's on the agenda a little earlier. I guess that'd be Friday anyway, wouldn't it? That's it?
Port Authority meeting next Tuesday, early.
I gave you this. "Pledge to Americas" tomorrow.
Yes.
At 11:30. So Harry said, "Should I go to that?" And I said, "Yes, yes." So Thursday, I have a photo shoot with Jeff City Magazine, because I'm the best of Jeff City. And then there's a press conference at 2:00, chief's meeting. Sunday, my article is in the News Tribune, so that's all I've got. Okay, we're gonna deviate from our agenda because...
We're having technical difficulties, Sam.
Oh, we're having...
You're just a minute.
She asked me to move care forward, and you have, okay. Okay, then we will keep going. Appointment by commission, reappointment of Tina Miles, Dan Renfro, and Dr. Mary Deacon to the Cole County Special Services Board. And I have the orders of the commission to appoint those.
I move, can we do this in one?
Yeah, should be fine.
I move to appoint Dan Renfro to the Cole County Special Services Board, Dr. Mary Deacon to the Cole County Special Services Board, and Tina Miles to the Cole County Special Services Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we all sign those. Any commission comments? No. Bids and contracts, bid award and contract signing of 2020-33 indirect cost study.
I have secondhand attached. Do you need another copy? We're gonna do more paper now, we're paperless.
For 2020-33 indirect cost study, we had two vendors bid on it. Our recommendation is to go with Maximus Consulting Services for $6,500. They did do it in 2019 as well, and it was about $300 less.
I'm good with it.
I'm good. Do we need a motion? Yes.
I make a motion when you want the contract to Maximus Consulting Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of Soul Source 2021-SS01, Henry M. Atkins &amp; Sons.
This one is for the ballots over at the sheriff's office. They use the Henry Atkins every year, and they have a budget on there about $50,000.
Motion to approve the Soul Source request form for vendor Henry M. Atkins &amp; Sons, Inc.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of Soul Source 2021-SS02 CNC Group.
This one is for maintenance. Greg, he does the maintenance as needed, and they're the only ones that can work on the HVAC equipment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of Soul Source 2021-SS03 Teleflex.
This one is for EMS. It's for their drills and needles. It is part of their budget.
Motion to approve the Soul Source request form, Teleflex.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of Soul Source 2021-SS04 Accurate Controls.
This one's for the sheriff's department. It's for the security supplies and upgrades.
The security envelope for our facility.
Motion to approve the Soul Source request form for Accurate Controls, Inc.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Did you want to talk about the windows for health?
We had a revised bid. We're gonna do that tempered glass, so if you guys are okay with that, and then I'll get the information to Kristen, and so they know how much it's gonna be. It's $182 more, I think, for it, and is recommended as a security measure by the sheriff.
As long as the sheriff approved it.
It's gotta be right.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we have some time. Make sure y'all are on board moving forward with it, so.
Okay. Accounts payable review, Kristen?
There are accounts payable for approval.
Move we approve accounts payable review.
Pending.
Pending, yeah.
I'm gonna let Jeff handle this one. I'm still the rookie here.
Okay, Jeff.
Make a motion to approve accounts payable review.
Okay, and then we're still missing with CARES.
We got a vote on it. Second it and vote it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm still looking at CARES. We have a human being. Are we ready to go?
I'm ready now.
Okay, then we will go to the CARES Act funding. When Debbie's not here, everything goes to pot. It's legal now.
No, it's not.
You guys are so far away now.
I can change that.
How you guys doing? So, pretty quick this morning, Julie is not feeling well, so I'm gonna cover for her. Did have a couple internal funding recommendations. I think you guys heard some discussion about, I think both of these things, last Tuesday after we got off the call, so hopefully you're familiar with what these two applications are for. So the first one is gonna be D-10-12, and this is for that EOC video wall upgrade, so that they can talk to all the different agencies and just have a really nice setup there. So, and that was for 204-56. And then the D-10-13 was the Guardian map software for the 911, and I think that shows basically where on a map different places are, so that they can do a better job of going and helping people. So, and that one was for 75-154.
So, these are the two contracts that you guys signed last week, but we were going to run through CARE, so she's now reviewed them and is presenting them to be funded directly out of CARES.
So what kind of action do we need to take on it to, we just need to approve?
I think you just need to approve those two applications, so we can pay them directly out of CARES.
Okay.
Because you've already signed the contract itself.
Okay, so, and this takes our CARES money from 400 and change down to?
Right, so we, if you look at the allocation, we were at 438-216 on the second page. That's before these two applications.
Okay.
Yeah, that would take it down to $159.6 is what I've got the amount for.
You good? You good?
Yes.
So then I make a motion, we approve D-10-12 and D-10-13.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Donuts next week, Brian.
I got it.
Okay.
For the record, that's the new guy.
Next thing on the list was just, just wanted to report that Kristen did the December reporting completed on Friday, so I wanted to make sure you were aware of that, because that was important, so that we could have an extension of time to make sure all the funds got spent to June 30 instead of December 30. So that has been done and complete, and we are good there. And then the last thing I want to talk about is just the subperceipient monitoring that we're gonna be doing. We have a lot of the information already. We asked for a lot of things when they went through the application process, and we reviewed invoices and proof of payments before we sent them the money. So many of the things with subperceipient monitoring is just making sure that they are spending that money appropriately. So we're gonna go through our documentation and make sure we've got everything there. So there'll be a lot of internal things on our end to just tie up on that. There might be a few questions that we have for some of the bigger subs, but that's where we are there. Again, we plan to be done with that by the end of the month, assuming there's no more external applications. And, yeah, I think we're in, we're in pretty good shape overall. If there's any questions about that or any additional items, that's all I've got for today.
Nope, I don't have any questions.
Nor do I.
No, we're good.
All right.
Still like your sign. We're...
Yeah. Gotta beat the Browns.
Yep.
We can do it. All right, you guys have a good morning.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have approval of CARES Act signing of subperceipient agreements?
We don't have any subperceipient agreements today.
Okay. Discussion of COVID-19 on-call hours.
Can we get any more information on this? How we can do that? Aren't we just kinda, Jill, do you find anything out?
About?
How we can or can't do the on-call hours? Want to do it come back to March?
You can't do it retroactively.
We're fixing the pay on it, though. We've done that before on things. If somebody wouldn't pay the right amount, we'd went back and fixed it.
I think we've gone back like a previous pay period or something to fix the corruption, but this is going back nine, 10 months ago to fix something. I don't know that you can do that retroactively.
So do I have to hire outside counseling or something to figure out what to do this? Because I think there should be a way to do it. I'm sorry, if they did the work, they were on-call, we do it in other areas, that we should be able to do it for them, and they should be reimbursed for their time, so. If you two say no, and it's not, no one mess with it anymore, then...
Well, I agree, they deserve to get paid, but if legally we can't do it, then, you know, perhaps when we get the HR person, maybe we can modify that. I don't know, I don't think we can go back.
And Harry knows this too, Kristen. In public employees in Missouri, it would constitute a bonus, because you're not correcting an error, you're doing something to, what am I gonna say?
Compensate them more than...
Right.
No, we're paying them for work performed, is what bottom line is. They did the work, they carried the pager, they carried the pager, I guess that's how it went.
But we also didn't have a policy in place to say that they would get paid for that.
Right.
We have discussed it.
We...
We've got it in the sheriff's office, so...
But you're talking about doing it completely different than you do for the sheriff's office, and they don't have the same restrictions that the sheriff's office has.
We can do it different.
The sheriff's policies don't apply to the health department.
I see where you're coming from, but I think this is twofold. I think the first thing is, have you fixed it from this point on? I think that's what you gotta do first, is fix it from this point on.
I think we did that last week, didn't we?
We don't have a policy in place yet.
So, that part, yes, but I think what we carried over was still going to be able to go back and be able to reimburse them for the time that they set aside from doing whatever and going out and having a good time to be able to be on-call and be accessible. So I think they deserve to be reimbursed, and I think there should be a way to do it. So, I don't see it as a bonus. I see it as you're being reimbursed for the time you have in, so I think there should be a way to do it. We can't wait till we hire an HR person, because that HR person isn't necessarily an attorney or whoever's supposed to be a lookout. Right now, we've got Jill, so I think we need to find a way to do it.
My heart is with you, Jeff, but the brain says we can't violate state statute whenever you feel morally...
What's being violated? Just because you all want to call the bonuses where you're saying it's being violated? So if I go get another attorney and I find a different way to go around it, do I gotta pay for the attorney? I mean, I think you can ask somebody and probably find some way around it.
You can ask all you want, and I mean, if you, go ask the AG's office. If they tell us we can do it, then I'd listen to it, but just to keep searching for an attorney to finally say, "You know what, I think you can do this," or "Go ahead and do it and take your chances."
But that's what I got right now, is an attorney saying, "Well, I think you can't do this."
No.
What's the difference? Okay, so what, find me the exact legal ramifications that say there's no way to do this, no way in hell, and if I prove it wrong, then what do I get out of it? I just have to go through more work. I think it needs to be looked into more. I think there's ways to be reimbursed for something they've done.
The problem is that when the phone was handed off to the employee, there was no agreement that the employee was gonna be compensated for that. Will you carry this home with you tonight and this phone? Is, you call it the COVID phone? What you call it? COVID phone was handed off, and it wasn't handed off as, will you carry this phone for $2 an hour? That wasn't part of the deal. It was, will you carry this phone and listen when it rings? And now if we go back and say, "Oh, we meant to say $2 an hour for doing this," that's retroactive change in pay, which the statute does not allow.
I disagree. I think you should be able to reimburse them for their time for something, so...
I agree, it's not fair, but for many years, when I'd tell a client, "That's the tax you have to pay," and they'd say, "That's not fair." And my answer was, "Fair has got, fair has got nothing to do with it."
I think we can find a way around it.
Go for it.
Can we check with the Attorney General? I mean, is it...
I'm not going to, but if Jeff wants to, if he wants to find a statute, a case law that says we can do it...
You guys can go on just what Jill said. You know the laws? You're an attorney too, I guess.
No, but she is, and she is our attorney, so...
There's a lot of stuff, though, if you talk to a different attorney, you're gonna get a different opinion.
Why don't you make a motion to do it, to pay him?
Okay, I make a motion, we pay the back pay, or the back for the carrying the phone, the $2, I don't even know what you call it, stipend or whatever we were gonna call it. So, it's gonna die from the last second, we'll get it over with then.
Will you have a policy, maybe next week, Kristy, that we can put on there?
Sure.
As much as I would like to pay him, Jeff, I...
There's a will, there's a way. I'm just saying, you can move on. Go ahead. I've lost other votes.
Okay.
These are the frontline people for us, so...
Oh, I know. I agree. Okay. Plans for former Health Department building on Industrial Drive. You know, we have a simple sign out there that has our number. I think Greg and I have shown it four times, and we gave the plans to Bowman, I think we gave the plans to Cobb, Lila Stark had the plans, and we have never received a contract on it. So we either need to list it with a realtor, Harry had an idea of just having an auction it, but it sitting out there is not doing it any good, and so...
No, an old building just sitting around is just gonna deteriorate even further, unless we do something with it, sell it or remodel it for some use for the county, if we have a use for it, which right now I don't think we have a use for it.
Jeff, you've got a lot of experience in the real estate business. These land auctions seem to be generating some interest. Is that a possibility here, where you just go ahead and advertise it and have a reserve?
If you do, we just have to have a minimum.
A reserve?
If you don't wanna give it away, so...
And do you contract with an auction company or handle it internally?
I think there's different ways to do it. You're gonna have to pay them something for auctioning it, and then I think if we do some kind of advertising on it, it might help and put out there that we're actually gonna reimburse an agent if they bring us a buyer, and, you know, make it a going rate, because we haven't really advertised it or anything, so...
No, no.
I think it's just been out there that, "Yeah, we'll get rid of it if you bring us a decent offer," and we've had a couple people look at it, but I don't think it fit them, so I think we had listed it, what, $250 is what we were asking? So, I don't know. The auctioning thing is, you can get things to move quicker on that, but I don't think you're gonna get what you want out of it, so... But I don't have a problem getting rid of it, because then we can put that towards Adams and move that along. So, I don't know. I don't disagree, it's just sitting there right now, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna help, and it's gonna probably deteriorate, so...
I hesitate to have unnecessary closed sessions, but does it take a quick closed session at a future date to set the parameters for a real estate transaction?
I think we'd be able to do it, because it'd be, we're basically talking about contract, so...
Okay.
Yeah, there's a provision for real estate, specific to real estate.
So perhaps we could have that on next Tuesdays, to visit about that?
Yeah.
So when you say auction, you want to do a live auction, or you want to do a sealed bid auction, or...
Perhaps there's the virtual auctions these days.
Virtual auction, so...
It could generate more interest. So next Tuesday, we would have a quick closed session to work out, hammer out details.
Okay. Have the assessor's office do appraisal on it, give us an idea of the value of it, too.
Has it ever been on the tax rolls? Has it always been owned by not-for-profit or governmental?
It was a National Guard credit union, and I think Ike Skelton had his office in it. I don't know, did they build it?
You just pull up some comps and see what else, office space or whatever is going for around here. I mean, it's a decent building, so...
Okay. We have destroyed warning siren Country Club in Zion, but...
So Sierra sent an email that she was having problems getting on. I don't know if she tried the new link or not, but she said maybe we should reschedule for when she has a better voice. If you guys wanted to discuss it, she said you could as well, but that she could not get on at the moment, if you want to push it to when she's feeling better.
We can move it till next week.
So we just gotta figure out if we're paying for it, or we're turning in the insurance? I'm trying to remember exactly what...
I think that's the discussion at the moment, that you have a new deductible amount with the insurance, that's, I think, $5,000.
$5,000.
And the repairs themselves, I think the difference between replacing the siren and fixing the one that's there is about $6,000. So, do you want to pay the $5,000 deductible and repair the one? But there could be more costs, there's sort of a certain portion of the siren that they have not opened up yet, so the cost of repairs could go up more, depending on once they open it up and start the repairs to the siren.
So one of them's $34.5, and the other one's $27,672. So I guess the options are we either replace it and insurance takes care of it and costs us $5,000, or...
I mean, I...
Replace it, and it costs us the $5,000 plus the difference between the $27,672 and the $34,445.
To me, at this point, and this is just my opinion, no one else's, is turn it into insurance and let them open it up and start the repairs. If they get to the point where it's not fixable, or it's way more than the cost of replacing it, then you replace it through the insurance, but...
I think that's where we're at, though, is we've got the estimate for fixing it at the $27,672.
But isn't there a caveat on there that that may not include everything? I thought she had said something that there was a portion of it, like the cell...
Includes damage once the cell tower is opened up, so...
I would probably just replace it, but that's...
But what you're saying is, once they get into it, it could end up replacing it anyway.
Well, I think your insurance is, if the cost exceeds the replacement cost, they would replace it, correct? Because it's insured.
I think so.
That would be my assumption, but I don't know that at the moment.
We're looking at the minimum of the $27,672, and then we foot the bill for $5,000. If they get into it, it's gonna cost them, once they get into the cells, and you're looking at... They won't cover it, if it needs replaced. I think I'm along with Kristen on this one. Let them get into it and open it up, approve the $27,672, and then once it gets opened up, if we have to replace it, the insurance is gonna take care of it, but if it doesn't have to be replaced, then I don't know what the benefit is in $6,000, $7,000 more dollars on it, if we're gonna get more years out of it or not.
And those are questions that Sierra probably could answer for you. I don't know those questions.
We don't know.
We'll wait till we get her here then.
So you want to push it to next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, unless she gets on here in the next hour, two hours, how long are we here today?
Hopefully not that long.
Four?
We don't have, we have no closed session.
Okay, so we'll punt that one then.
Okay. We will go to study for build-out of Cole County Jail.
So, this is just a study that I want to start meeting with Architects Alliance about how much the cost it would be to build out our facility, not only the build out of the jail, but that also includes a staffing study for what it would be to staff it. And then we also want to look at doing a video courtroom, because the one that we have is just not, especially with five courts now, is not enough. And then we have, we were talking, when Chris was here, we were talking about doing a server room downstairs, and I'd still like to think about that during this study, and then extending our training room upstairs on the main floor, where the hole is, I call it the death pit, but anywhere where that hole is, I'd like to fill that in, extend our training room out, so it gives us more ability to train people. our training room out so it gives us more ability to train people. It's, right now, I'm not asking for any money. I just want to be able to meet with Architects Alliance and start going through and seeing how much money it would have cost. And I'd ask if one of you wants to attend those meetings when we do so that way you have, you understand what we're trying to do. And then, once we get that done, we can present it to you guys in an open meeting and let you know what our thought process is. But what I don't want to do is, I don't want to start meeting with Architects Alliance and then come to find out you guys really don't want to do anything. So I'm just wanting to move forward with looking at the build out. And that was, basically, this was all Brian's idea, so.
So what's the cost going to be on the study?
I don't know.
Do you have an estimate on that?
I really don't know.
Grab a number out of the air real quick like this? So, I mean, I'm fine with looking at it, just to have an idea of what.
That's all I want to do. And then, the things that we talked about, we could do in phases or we can look at different sections when we do the study. So, to do the, because the main thing is to build out of the jail. So that would be the number one. And then we could look at doing the video courtroom, the server room, and the extended the training room. So those are the basic things that I'm talking about. We also need some more observation rooms in our current facility, and I'd have them look at that also to see if there's a way to do that.
I'm fine with doing this. It probably, it probably won't be more than $900,000. Oh, my God, we can't take it anywhere.
You're right.
Now you can see you weren't talking.
Okay, I'm against it. No, no.
Hey, he gets to bring the donuts and you watch out.
Yeah, thank you for doing it.
But, go ahead, Carrie.
What I was going to say, by proving the ground, was, you know, that's why we made this floor that color. So, it's all right. That is not the first time. It's not a new floor.
Am I supposed to say my name? Okay, Kerry Gamfer. Is that good enough? The other thing in that study would, probably most important, would be the cost to do the project, the cost estimate for the construction. And so, we do have time, or we would have time in there for other disciplines, like the mechanical system, let's say, with a project in, to do the future housing. That's going to have a big impact on the mechanical systems. A lot of capacity was built, but we would still go in, look at that, okay, what's it take if we do this project mechanically? So we're not designing the mechanical system expansion, but we would be talking to the mechanical engineer to give us a narrative. And we've done that for every discipline would be in that report.
Yeah, I know that's what Miller's going to be costing involved with it because on a project that big, probably got to give them something for sitting down and putting a bid together for it because you want something that's going to be as close to possible as actual.
It's a pretty detailed assessment. That's, you know, we have every discipline involved in it.
And Brian said he'd taken out his budget to pay for it. Is that what you said?
Whatever we can get for $100.
Cost us more to have him here today.
Right now, we need to.
It's not free, man.
I mean, if you had to have range, Jeff, if you had to have range, it's more than $50,000 and it's less than $100,000, significantly less.
Okay. So it gets us an idea what it's going to be to do it. And then we'll have plans for when we, even if we want to do part of it.
Well, it'll give us an idea of the amount of money. Because, you know, we keep talking about the contingency money that I have, and that's one of the plans with that contingency money we do it. So at least we can, you know, they, I hear people say that the citizens are wondering what you're going to do with that money. Personally, no one's ever came to me and asked me that, but I hear people say that. So if that's the case, then now we'll be able to say, well, if we do a build out, this is how much money it's going to cost to do that build out.
So will that contingency money be able to pay for this since that's part of it?
Oh, yes, sir. I have.
That's basically one of the money.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I really agree with what the sheriff's saying with these other things, not only innate housing, but the, you know, the upstairs lobby and the data center. To look at that comprehensive is the most efficient way to do it.
And quite frankly, it may, some of it may not be feasible. I mean, truthfully, it just may not be feasible, but at least we'll know. And that's what I want to do. I want to know.
I'm good.
Well, it's been sitting there for 10 years, 11 years now?
Yes, sir.
Maybe if there's stuff we can use it for, little by little.
So, when we have this conversation, it'll be probably my command staff and him for the concept alone. Do you, or well, one of his people, maybe?
No.
And he will not be allowed to have coffee.
It'll be a group of us.
But do you want, that one of you want to attend those meetings also?
I think it'd be good to attend it so that if you let us know when they're going to be and one of us can hang around if we can. And maybe if it's not the same person over time, it's just good to see what you're doing.
And what we'll do is, it'll probably, probably be at your place because that's where all the records are at. So it'd probably be at his place because he can, he has all the data there that we'll be able to look at.
We want a better HVAC system than what we've got.
Yeah, I'd like to be on the handle side.
So, yes, I mean.
No problem.
Greg needs to be a part of that because what we've got is.
We might look and replace it all at the same time.
Well, that's what I was thinking. Do you have donuts at your office?
Next week.
Bloody Marys, too?
Oh, yeah, yeah, actually, we do. If you stay long enough, we can go across the street.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kerry.
Part-time staff for Health Department.
Hello. I forgot to mention earlier, Donna reminded me, we are still under a public health emergency. So I know that a lot of the statutes have been waived. And I'll call the Attorney General's office and see if this statute that pertains to something like that has been waived because the whole state is still under a public health emergency. So there are very special circumstances. And in the meantime, I'll instruct my staff that they're not going to carry the COVID phone home and we're just not going to respond to those calls after hours.
Actually, it's in the Constitution. Are you talking about the back pay?
Or compensation for hours worked if they're not granted, if it's not under a contract. Anyway, I'll call just because I know we're under a public health emergency, so a lot of things have been waived or there's been special provisions.
We're talking about almost three different things here in the same conversation, I think. If we go back to the earlier conversation and we're talking about on-call, we can fix on-call prospectively. We can't fix it retroactively, so.
Even if there's a public health emergency?
Well, a public health emergency would not trump the Constitution. So if the Constitution says you can't do retroactive increases, that's the end of discussion.
It's not a retroactive increase.
We haven't done it before.
But it's not an increase. It's reimbursing them for hours worked.
We don't need to litigate that here, but you know, what we ought to do is fix.
I will, I will have a policy for you next week.
Prospectively, so we need a policy.
Yeah, and in that policy, I'd also like to include, like, temporary special rates of pay, too.
Like you said, let us do our thing. Okay, it's like we're getting divorced. We'll have our attorney talk to your attorney.
Yep, okay. But the other thing that, so this topic is some additional part-time staff. We, you know, with the vaccine and scheduling the clinics, we only have seven nurses. They can't do the scheduling and give the shots and do the vaccine inventory and everything else. So we would like some part-time staff that could help with some scheduling, help with the elderly people that are calling in and can't do, access the survey online to get on the list. We're having to input that data. So the girls at the front desk, they're also working registration back at the vaccine clinic. They're also trying to, you know, take care of the clients that are coming in to the clinic and they're trying to answer the phone. So we would like to add three part-time staff at 20 hours a week to our, well, actually, we have a couple of contract tracers in mind and I, we previously had paid them $25 an hour for this task. We don't think that $25 an hour is really warranted. We were thinking more in the $18 to $20 range. And the good thing is, one of them also has a degree in health education. So she's offered before to help out with some of our education messages. So I would, she could sort of do several tasks if we had her on part-time.
Kristin, if these people had previously qualified as benefited employees, none of these?
No, we had them part-time before.
Oh, even the tracers? Okay.
Yeah, they were all part-time, no benefits.
I'm fine with it because you're, you're going to be, get busier and busier and busier as we get into this vaccinations and vaccines, if, you know, if and when we get vaccines. So.
So are you, are you guys good with a transfer from contingency? So we did put that payroll money from previously from the cares into general fund, doing a transfer from contingency, which is where that money is currently setting to the Health Department's part-time to cover those additional part-time staff?
I think that's a great place to take it from. That's, was our intention, I think, so.
So this would, this would eat into the number that we've moved over for health? Or does it eat into the 143 that we, or 38 that we got left?
Well, so the number that got moved over for their salaries was to pay us back for previous salaries last year from March through December. So we made that payment in December and it went into contingency. It was not reallocated into the budget at the moment. So we're going to move that money that was repaid to us into their part-time.
Fine.
Three staff, 20 hours a week.
And what, three?
Let's do 18. Isn't that what we decided on? Yeah, more than fair for the type of work they're going to be doing.
I'm fine.
So we'll work up that number and bring a transfer to you for that.
We're going to move Greg down to the bottom, so we will go to Public Works Approval of Purchase Support, 550 Cabin Chassis and.
So Commissioners, the first item is the cabin chassis for the 550. It's a state contract for $48,478. This will replace the second of the two 550s that we needed to replace due to maintenance. The, the 550 that we purchased last year, they were unable to get the bed for that truck. Naphide was unable to get the bed for that truck completed before snow season. So our staff actually went in and built a bed. And they did a really good job on it. So the bed for this truck was PO'd out of last year's budget. Any questions on that?
Nope. No questions. Nope.
All right, and do you want to approve that one first?
That's, okay. Try and get back to that one.
We just need approval to go forward with awarding the, or not awarding the contract, just buying it off of the state contract.
Just purchasing it off the state contracted. You want to do those separately from the dump truck?
Traditionally, the commission has voted just to proceed with that. There's no contract to sign.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, is their financial summary or whatever does have signature lines and stuff, something that's contractor, if that's just, we'll give you the okay. So you all all right with it then?
Yeah.
Make a motion and we approve the purchase of the 550.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And if you don't mind, we'll move on to the approval of the purchase of the two tandem dump trucks. That's a Sourcewell contract. This is to replace two of our existing tandem dump trucks that are 2003 models, both with over 200,000 miles on them. We'll also be replacing the plows and spreaders for both of these trucks as well with Henderson Products. And the cost of replacement will be $213,900 each. Same, same thing, just approval to proceed.
I don't have that one attached. Is that normally what they're going for? Or is there not a significant increase or anything?
The last truck that we bought, it was either early last year or late the year before, '19. It was around $230,000 for everything. With our mechanic crew, they really researched the specs and were able to pick out exactly what we needed and make some tweaks and actually cut the price by $16,000 or so.
Oh, cool.
So it's a cost savings there. Total is about $32,000. That's very beneficial, plus we're getting a truck that we need, not necessarily everything that we wanted, but what we needed. And actually, I think it's even the better truck than the previous one.
This truck comes with an automatic transmission, which we believe will be more of what we pursue in the future instead of a standard manual transmission that, you know, not a lot of drivers today can drive those trucks, so. And it's also a maintenance cost issue with adjusting clutches and so on, so we believe this is the right truck for what we need. Right trucks, two trucks.
Okay, I'm fine with it.
I am, too.
Any more questions or make a motion and we approve the purchase of the two international tandem dump trucks with plow and spreader?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we will go to your discussion and approval of proposed one-half cent sales tax category funding.
We presented this on a few different occasions, never for approval, but just for discussion purposes. This is the breakdown of the various project or category spending proposed for the next half-cent sales tax if it were to pass in April. This is a process to go through to come up with these funding splitouts that we run through the Roden Bridge Advisory Board. They voted to recommend this to the County Commission back at their November meeting. I would point out that the estimated total revenue or expenditures for the next sales tax would be $34,500, or $34,500,000. That, I feel, is a little conservative. We wanted to be a little conservative just going into some uncertainties with the economy, COVID, and all the impacts with that. This is assuming flat growth years in '20 and '21, which we know '20 has been about 8% higher. So I think the funds could actually be a little bit higher than that $34,500,000 amount. However, it's a safe number to go with, and I'd rather come in with more funds than less when projecting funding category spending. So, just overall, the categories that we're looking at, the safety and capacity improvements, we would like to continue more of what we've done on Tanner Bridge Road, more safety improvement type projects, fixing alignment issues, intersection issues on Tanner Bridge Road, as well as looking at Bald Hill Road and some of these other higher-volume roads that come into Jefferson City from out in the county. We still have a gravel road upgrade program. As you know, we revised that policy last week as approved by the County Commission. $5.5 million would go to cooperative projects with the city in which they match that for a total of $11 million over the course of that five-year period. Major thoroughfares, we need to look at upgrading some of these roads that do come into Jefferson City from out in the county. Scott Station Road, Henwick Lane, Rainbow Drive, roads like that that are the collector roads that come into the community. Cooperative projects with the villages, that was a very successful program in the current sales tax in which we allotted some additional funds above and beyond the $100,000 each community gets. They were able to, we did that as a grant program in which they submitted applications and that, those were reviewed by the Roden Bridge Advisory Committee and certain dollar amounts were awarded and then approved by the County Commission. That was very successful and five of the seven communities are either, have either completed good projects or in the process of finishing them this year. We would like to bump that number from $800,000 to $1 million. So that would be a total of $1.7 million going to cooperative projects with the small communities or villages. One big ticket item is the resurfacing or concrete street replacement. That would jump quite a bit, over $2 million, an additional $500,000 each year for $1.75 million each year going to resurfacing and concrete street replacement. And that really would also encompass pavement preservation, which is something we're really... And that really would also encompass pavement preservation, which is something we're really focusing hard on. If we can preserve our payments in good shape, overall, it'll reduce our costs and allow us to keep at a good rate that the citizens expect. Equipment replacement, bumping that number from 1.45 million over the five-year period to 2 million. And bridge and low-water crossing, culvert storm our projects staying roughly the same at 3.5 million with a contingency of 1 million. And that would be the 85% Road and Bridge side, the 15% county facility equipment improvements. Those numbers would be at your discretion. But this is the same basic format as the previous sales tax, with the exception of increasing the facility maintenance modification and renovation number to 3.275 million. So is there any questions about any of what we did, either internally with staff or with Road and Bridge Advisory Board?
Has 8515 always been the allocation?
As long as I can remember, I don't know if it was at the very first.
I was going to say, the very beginning was before me, but as long as I've gone back, it's been 8515.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's been that way from the get-go.
Okay. When the villages got into the competitive part of cooper, you know, with the county slash villages, was there more demand there than supply of dollars?
Yes, each, good question, Harry. I don't know the total of all the five projects submitted. It was above this 800,000 that was there. The Road and Bridge Advisory Committee, they did look at each project, ranked them, and then appropriated the funds accordingly. Some communities didn't get everything they wanted. For example, Russellville, they got a little less. However, they took that money and added a, they also got a CDBG grant.
Right.
Through the state and added that to the projects. They were able to leverage our funds with other funds to get an improved project even being above what they had before, so.
The 200,000 increase there is, would help them get more of what they've asked for?
Yes, a couple of reasons. We only had five of the seven communities submit projects, assumed that the other two would be interested.
Right.
And then also just, it was, I feel it was a very successful program and we need to build upon that. And so adding some more funds would generate some more interest and do more projects.
So you said it's conservative, so if it comes in above that, do you come back to us? Or how, what's the, if there are extra dollars, what's the allocation of that?
Interesting question. We typically, we'll receive funds from the current tax into the next period by.
Usually, we have at least a year or two overlap, depending on what's left or what projects aren't fully completed that were started in the old.
So in these numbers, it's hard to hit that exactly. You're going to have a little bit of overlap one way or another. Typically, we've been pretty close on our numbers. I don't know that I've ever, we've ever come back to the commission to bump some up a little bit. We just, you know, we generally know what projects are going on. The Road and Bridge Advisory Board is good with feedback. And of course, there's a commission member, Chris Woz, and, you know, why possibly you'll be appointed to that? And so it's a constant, you know, ongoing decision on what gets spent and where. And I don't know that we've ever, you know, had to look at tweaking this through a tax period to bump some numbers up to make it match.
Well, sooner or later, every sales tax dollar collected is restricted for this purpose and it can only go for this purpose. And this is, 2021 is the fifth year of the current sales tax measure. And I think we've got more than one-fifth of the last five years to spend this year. And if it's unspent, it just rolls forward.
It does. So we track each five years in their own department. So it's its own fund, which is restricted, but each five years is its own department. So we track the five years by itself. We don't intermingle the next sales tax with this one.
Okay.
So you can track that cost in that department by itself over the five-year period. And that's why we were saying it actually will have money that carries for beyond the five years, because we hold it in that department to spend on the projects that were included in that five-year period.
Okay.
Yeah, the MSP, we're going to carry. But I can say the projects in cooperation with the villages has worked out really, really well, so.
Yeah, I will add that the 5.5 million that goes to the projects with Jefferson City, that list is unknown at this point. It's hopeful that we have an idea of what their categories will be by the time our sales tax is voted on. Last time, we did have that, but we won't know those exact projects until we get a little further into this year, maybe into next year.
And since the city follows the county with respect to extending the sales tax, do we lock them into that 5.5 by adopting the 5.5 ourselves? In a sense, I guess they could, more than, they could pay more than half, I guess, if they wanted to.
I think it's just an unwritten agreement that, you know, we'll do 5.5, but they have to be the same.
Okay.
So, yeah, you kind of lock them into making that position too.
And we usually do those projects one at a time. It's not like, hey, here's your 5.5 to spend. You talk and approve those projects as you go through the five years.
And as time goes by, those projects change, à la Dunklin East, right? The roundabout that we visited.
Yeah, the roundabout, and there was never a roundabout said that was going to be done there. It was just safety improvements along Dunklin, or along Clark Avenue. So, you know, things can change. And that, do a five-year period, it's hard, you know, it's hard to plan perfectly what things are going to look like as emerging, you know, needs emerge, economic development needs emerge, MSP, things like that. There's just unknowns five years out, and so you try to do your best.
Talking, city councilman, I've heard everything from the High Street Viaduct to Monroe Street widening and it making it to A. And I think we've had Wildwood on the last two cycles, right?
Wildwood, I know they're interested in, yes, Wildwood would be a high priority for us. They're interested in West Edgewood improvements there, Creek Trail Drive, Stadium.
Yeah.
There had been a study, a traffic study done there a few years back, and so they've identified what to do. The last sales tax, the city had prepared a list of projects, possible projects, just a master list, and it was about $40 million worth of work. So there's plenty of needs out there. And it's just a matter of, you know, working, staff working together and county commission, city council mayor working together on selective what to do. So I guess I would just ask that you all approve this with the main reason in order for the campaign committee to start printing envelopes and getting information put out. They would like this approved.
I think I'm fine with it. I'm, that might be a little leery of the 34.5 number, because that's about 6.9 per year. We're averaging about 6.5 per year right now.
Well.
Actually, seven this year, but.
We're starting, we're down four and a half for January, so.
I did, that number, it's, we did look at a 2% growth. It's a 2% growth annually over the five-year period based on assuming that '20, '21 are flat with 2019 revenues. And that's a 2%, and that's what we used in the previous one, we used 2%. So if you assumed, and I think we're going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about 7 million instead of 6.5 million in 2020, if you punch that number in.
Yeah, we were just.
Assume it's flat, you're quite a bit higher. So it's, I understand economic times are a little uncertain right now. We don't know where we're going to be in a few years, but.
That was the only thing that just kind of makes me Larry with all the unknowns. But 31 is what we used for the 2017 to 21.
We're going to be higher than that.
And it's a million and a half higher than what we projected, so we've been pretty conservative on our projections. I think we'll be okay, but that was the only number that jumped at me. And then the ones with the cooperative projects, I think those are great projects, because a couple of them have been able to use state money and stuff that they wouldn't have had money to match and have been able to use otherwise. So I think we're tripling the money sometimes, so that's a good thing.
And it got the small communities interested in doing improvements in their cities, and they hadn't really been able to do that prior.
I think they're always interested in doing the improvements they want.
Didn't have the money to do it, yeah.
Yeah, there's plenty of it out there, so.
I'm fine.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Just take a motion to, if so, I make a motion to approve the unapproved draft presented by the Public Works for the allocation of sales tax proceeds if the citizens enact the extension of the sales tax.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Can we go back to unfinished business for just a minute with a little bit of housekeeping for cares?
Okay. Please?
Please. So we talked about the health department's part-time employees moving from contingency. So in both general fund and EMS, we did not budget the emergency fund. We kind of decided we would hold off and kind of wait to see what was going to happen with the remaining cares money. But I have some invoices, I have about $10,000 in invoices for PPE. I kind of want your guys' guidance as far as, do you want to spend down the 156,000 that's remaining in cares with these types of purchases first? And then move to our contingency that we had taken last year for salaries and spend that? Or do you want to create those lines to spend down what we've already moved over? I know EMS, we took a little more than we were going to, because we knew we were going to have PPE still coming in. I'm just looking for your guys' thoughts on what order you want to spend that money? Do you want to spend down the remaining cares money first and then move to the others? Or do you want to do it differently? Because we kind of talked about continuing to spend from the emergency fund and that being reimbursed, not applying directly to cares. So I could create that emergency fund, set aside a certain dollar amount in EMS for PPE and get that reimbursed through cares?
Spend it down, I would say, would be the easiest one.
And I know that the health department's the same way. They have some supplies and things that are needed for those vaccine clinics. Do you want to pay for that out of cares first and spend cares down? Do you want to move from contingency and general fund to?
Can't we put cares sorted to bed at some point if we spend this down? And then we can say, that's history and we don't have to worry about journal entries and all these things?
Correct.
I was, I would think that the procedure would be to spend it down and zero it out at some point.
Okay, I'm good with that.
And we're going to have a lot more PPE.
Yes, I have, I have $10,000.
Yeah, we're going to have a lot, we're going to have a lot more than that as well, so.
So the 156 that's remaining in cares, do you want to split it evenly between other departments? So like health departments, vaccines and things like that versus PPE? Do you want me to do, can you give me an idea of?
If everyone comes in first, spend it down?
That's fine, but.
Okay, well, that's what I was asking.
At the point where you are, I'm getting $10,000 worth of bills in a day, keeping track of that. If they're not encumbering the money, I'm not going to know when we hit that dollar amount on the notes.
So then do we want to tell them a certain amount? And then if they get angry, then we have to start having other?
That's kind of what I'm thinking, is if you wanted, of the 156 that's remaining, do you want to put a certain portion of it in EMS or PPE? And do you want to put a certain portion of it into general fund for anything that's related to vaccine clinics or emergency-type purchases that people ask you for?
We know when it's being spent, right? I mean, it comes up to us for approval before they just go out and buy more PPE.
I would put more in health.
I don't know that you or I are getting, I mean, I don't know how much PPE they have ordered that they have not received yet.
A lot.
I mean, I don't have that number.
But I think as we go into the vaccinations and stuff, the health department's going to be involved a lot more, and so I want to make sure.
And I think that there have been some significant asks from the works as well for additional funding from cares?
Where do we have the most flexibility to spend the last cares dollar? Which approach?
I would say that you have the most flexibility in general fund. But the biggest amount is coming through PPE and it's coming through EMS. You could pay for that PPE out of general, so you could put the whole 156 in an emergency line in general and first come, first served, just as long as you know that.
I would go for the flexibility, because we can, if we see someone is taking too much or is too aggressive, someone, some department, we can filter that or slow that down, right? Do you agree, Jeff?
Yeah, I don't know if it, I just, I think the part that bothers me is not knowing all the PPE that's being purchased.
That really bothers me as well. I feel like they need to be doing a purchase order or something to encumber those funds, so we know how much PPE we're waiting on.
Well, then part of us too, you had to email that one out. We need to be watching who the vendors are and make sure they're not over their limits and things, so. So we need to approve it before it's spent, and then at that time, we can decide where we want to take it from.
Okay.
So do you want the whole 156 in general fund and they have to come up here and get prior approval before purchase?
I think as we get closer to the end, you know, we might find two people coming to the door at the same time with two invoices, and when you add them together, that's more money than we have left.
Yes.
So I think they have to, they have to get pre-authorization at some point, and maybe we're at that point right now.
I think we are very close to it if we are not there.
All right, let's, so what does it take for that to happen? Is it just?
Send out a nice letter. So if they don't have prior approval, then we send them the bill?
So I think at this point, the 156 will go into an emergency line in general fund.
All right.
And anyone that wants to have purchases approved through that emergency line will have to come up and get authorization from you all before the purchase. And I know that the health department has sent a list of what their supply costs are for clinics. Are you guys good with approving that at the moment? Because those are costs that need to be.
I think it was around $7,900 and included some extra syringes, because, you know, we talked about they only sent five with those vials, and sometimes you can get six doses out of it, so we need syringes. And then there was like another emergency kit in case, like, someone goes into anaphylactic shock or something like that. We want to have a kit, two kits, to be able to deal with that. And then we had to buy some more handouts for the, at the testing sites, because they're running out of the pink sheets that we give out that tells people what to do if they test positive. So I know those were the two that we sent in.
Did we have those ID card scanners, was that in your number or not?
I don't think, yes. I think that we did ask for two more of those when we go to clinics. So, yeah, two more ID scanners for when we go out to the, to the clinics and we scan the IDs and the insurance cards.
As a department director, do you have any heartburn with our plan, with the plan here?
No, not at all.
Okay, good.
But I would like to get the ones that I sent approved today, so we could get them moving.
Okay.
But no, I don't have any problem with that. And like I said, I don't anticipate a bunch more costs. I mean, syringes might be the only thing. Once we get these emergency kits, I guess if we use EpiPens, we'll have to replace them, but they're like a few cents now, they're very cheap. But, you know, we might have to replace some of those supplies. But other than that, I don't anticipate us needing a lot more things for the vaccine clinics unless we can't find, we're going to have to move to a bigger space at some point. If we can't find a free space, you know, we might have to pay. Hopefully, we can find a free space. People are usually pretty good about working with us.
Yeah, the national news is finally saying that you're actually getting more out of one vial than what they were suggesting. And, but then they're also talking about in some of the states where they are throwing away a lot of those because they're not getting, they open and they don't have enough people to. because they're not getting their, they open and they don't have enough people to, and I'm like.
And it's only good for some, yes.
There's some really stupid states.
Yeah, we have two or three thousand people on the list already.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
It won't go to waste here.
Any questions, sir?
Oh, I was just going to say, probably EM, myself and EMS are probably the two that will probably be most of the issue because before I make a purchase, I have, I'm, I'm planning on taking it out of my fund somewhere. And that's whatever you guys or Kristen says, no, we need to pay for this directly out of there. So, I think maybe like the PPE that was, you gave EMS, I don't remember those like, I don't remember. You gave him a lot, a lot of money for the PPE when it comes out. So, maybe what he was thinking is that's where the money was going to come from. Now, if you want to pull it from somewhere else, that's cool. But I think what the letter should say is you need to have a funding source before you order something and get the approval. And then if you guys choose to take it out of GR or emergency fund, and that's something different, but.
So, that is an option as well. We moved payroll money into EMS. We can create their own line for spending that money on PPE as well if you want to have more flexibility with the funding that's remaining.
Because you're still with health department too. The other, the security upgrade is going to cost you some money too. And so, I'm trying to get that done as soon as possible, but. I'm just throwing that out there. I know that before I, before we spend money, number one, I always check and make sure where we're at on that sliding three-month window. And number two, I try to have a spot that we're pulling the money from. Even if it's coming to you guys saying, I got to pull it from contingency and then you guys make the decision, no, it's paid out of cares or no, it's paid out of this other thing, so.
For the last few months, it's been kind of easy going, yeah, that's obvious, that's going to be cares money. Let's just keep it coming, make sure you guys got it taken care of. And now we're have to start figuring out what it's coming from, so.
So, we did, we did transfer to EMS over and above the 10 people. We knew we had the 10 people in the budget and we needed to set aside that money. We transferred more than that from last year's salaries. So, if you want to create a line in there to spend some of those funds that are not necessarily set aside or earmarked at the moment, we can do that as well.
Well, there's already been a missed pay period. I'm not, that's not the correct terminology. I mean, we budgeted for 10 people for 12 months.
Right.
We're almost halfway through a month with how many? Three people? I'm not sure. It's not going to be 12 months of 10 people. So, whatever it takes to maintain flexibility, if you want to move some dollars over to non-payroll out of that, I don't see an issue. But at the, at the end of the day, what we've decided here is department directors and, I guess, elected officials, don't be running out and expect automatic approval. Ask, get, ask for some pre-authorization before you're about to encumber some debt expenses.
And John's right though to the.
I will be coming down with a transfer. If you guys don't agree with it, we can discuss it more.
The things for the health department to make it safer is not going to be cheap, so.
So, I will prepare a transfer and bring it down. If you guys want to discuss it more, we can.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't necessarily have to be pre-approved, but make sure you have funding for it somewhere before you get to.
That's the thing. You just got to make sure you have a way to fund it before. And then if you guys decide to fund it another way, that's up to you.
And I do have a few straggling items, some things the health department had put on their credit card in December, some of those ID card scanners, those things I'm going to go ahead and pay out of that emergency fund. You've already kind of given your okay. It's just that the invoices are trickling in now, so.
Okay. Anything else on cares?
No.
Okay.
Well, the ones you're talking about, the judge was asking for.
Yes, you, you do need to speak with him. I told him that if he had additional requests, he needed to come to you all. And I think he sent an email with what those additional requests were.
This judge beat him?
Uh huh. Because I think that they are asking for some additional staffing as well.
I want some more air filters, radios, part-time help. Off-site jury venues. If not dollar signs on each one of them. I mean, there's some estimates on some of it as far as maybe hours and the part-time help. I think they're short right now on their marshals, so that's not helping out either.
Right, and I think Donnie was going to talk to you all about that because he's been backfilling with some part-time staff that he had on staff already. But he's going to go through his part-time money way quicker than he expected. But he also has an open position that's not starting until February 1st. So, he thought about moving at least the money that was in there for January into his part-time to cover some of that cost.
Well, that off-site jury venue Judge Joyce had talked to me about and it was going to be, it was a building out on industrial. It was going to be thousands of dollars a week. So, that we need, I mean.
I don't know that that's sustainable long term.
Yeah, I don't, I, we need to, yeah, I don't, I don't know what the answer is there, but I don't think that's something we can, we can support. It's. We look for someplace to do vaccinations at jury, but I, it's, I think any of those, if we get a big enough and we have to rent it or something like that, we're talking.
You got your little two-way radios, John, that the marshal's might be able to use?
No, not the frequency they're wanting to use. I've been talking to them about that. They're wanting to use UHF and that's probably the best thing they can use over there. But I've been, we've been talking about it. This isn't a conversation that just came up. We've been talking about this for about a month and a half. The problem is if any of the radios that I would have, they'd have to get a frequency and there are just not that many out there. Uh, UHF, there's a lot.
And we have like a whole backup radio. We're using some right now for the vaccine clinics. We have a whole backup.
You're talking about the little two ways? Yeah, those won't work there. Throughout the whole facility, it's not going to work. Hopefully, there's a way also if we get the, if we into UHF, it'd be the same as ours that I live in the facility and we'd be able to add those frequencies to ours since we help out there so much and we'd be able to communicate together. So, it's a, it's a plan that we've been talking about.
Okay. I thought it was simpler than that. They just need somebody to communicate from outside where they're checking people in and we've got people lined up. Somebody inside saying, yeah, you can let somebody in, somebody just left, you know, like they have an Applebee's.
Sure, yeah. But it's, no, it's a, it's a good point, but yeah, it's not going to work. It won't be that easy there because of the, the, the structure of that facility.
Yeah, it's just a challenge keeping it open. We've got more equipment for remote work, so we've got fewer people there. So, do you need more filters if you've got less people there?
The radios aren't.
I thought the filters were already ordered. They just haven't come in.
I think they were waiting for delivery of a few so they could try them out and make sure that they were going to work for what they needed. And now they've decided they work. They want additional.
Yeah, I didn't remember where they were at on that.
Well, they had some big ones, but they were waiting on some smaller ones or something. I didn't, I didn't think they'd come in yet, but I, I don't.
There are some that haven't been received, but there's also some that have been that I think they want additional numbers.
Okay. By the way, I haven't heard anything about what they want to do outside either, if they're still lining people up out there. We've had a mild winter so far and we don't have a tent.
I think Greg had a good idea there, so.
So, we've still got that stuff to kick around. If you're going to do it, we're going to have to do it sooner than later. We're having a foot of snow out there and they don't want a tent. Just trying to eat this elephant one bite at a time. I'm about full.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Greg? Just got a maintenance truck purchase and then we'll go.
Ms. Barr, I said I had asked the commission for approval to purchase a new vehicle.
So, every year when we approve the budget, you guys approve a lump sum into sales tax for purchases. We ask that the departments come up here and get permission before they move forward with those purchases to make sure you guys are on board with those. So, that's what Greg's doing.
Well, I, the idea of you getting a new one and then putting a new bed on your old one and that way, because we also had a van in at one time. And we're taking the van out and just putting a new bed on your current truck. And that way, you still got two vehicles, but it's considerably cheaper, so.
Yeah, I talked to Tyler out there and he was giving me a price, but he thought around 22, 2300 for a flat bed and for, for you guys to put it on, so. And then he also said on the new truck, he would go ahead and put the side boxes and stuff on. I've got it already. I've got it already, yeah. I done got it off the state car track, so. Go pick it up. Road trip.
If you do got anything additional, just please keep working with Tyler on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. He's a rock star.
Yep. That's all.
So, like we did with the trucks for public, or for, yeah, Public Works this morning, we need to have the bids together and stuff and know the cost on it, right? That's, and then we approve it like we did this morning.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I had, from talking with you the other day, that I had to approve it first before I get the bids finalized and then.
So, you want to, that's to say okay before you bid it?
Well, no, he could have brought bids with him today, but he needs your okay to move forward with the purchase, so.
I will bring you the bids first before it gets purchased, so we can do a purchase order.
The stuff you just talked about, bring it to us and then we can approve it.
It's a Harley-Davidson pickup, right?
No, sir.
I'll get you a sticker.
That's his.
Get you a sticker. Honda Moped. Don't worry, what you cover all's a moment.
Okay.
Well, that was easy. All right, we're done.
Oh.
Uh, no.
No, we have discussion of county maintenance, which is.
Police.
You're down three and a half?
I had one go home sick this morning, so I may be even down even more tomorrow.
So, you're down three and a half right now.
I've got one that retired on me, one that just gave us notice, two and two up basically on medical right now.
I still think you're going to have to pay them more to get people to either to retain them or recruit them, so.
I got one application in this morning from St. Louis and the guy wants $28 an hour.
It's.
And that's more than I'm. Sausage.
So, he can do electrical plumbing and fix our heaters and everything?
That's what it's said on there.
It's not exactly who we've been hiring or what we've been hiring or even advertising for.
I want you guys to make sure that you look at the, the big picture as well. So, changing the salaries of his maintenance workers could affect, you know, the starting salaries of a maintenance worker out at Public Works as well. I think you need to look at in comparison other salaries when you make those changes just because there is a broader effect on, on other salaries as well.
He got McDonald's paying 1250 an hour to start. He got Unilever 1944. He got Atachi ABV which pays damn good money out there. They're looking for help. Emerson UE is looking for help. Alpo is looking for help.
Corrections, this, they, they brought it in the store. They're doing a, a one-stop hiring event January 6th, January through the 13th, and 13th. And they are 1549 per hour and full state benefits. And they can't get, but I mean, that's, so I mean, it's, everybody is.
I'm not denying that something needs to be done. But I want to make sure that you're looking at all the parts and pieces that most likely will need to move or shift in at the same time.
Do we have a, a county-wide minimum?
Um, we do not. We have a starting salary for each position that sometimes gets followed and sometimes doesn't.
Yes, Eric.
The entry level maintenance worker in Public Works is 29.6, I believe. And that's comparable to what J.C. Card's pays and City Jefferson entry level as well in Public Works. So, I don't know that we need to look and change that necessarily.
So, 1423 is the hourly rate for, for that salary?
Well, where they're going to have to pay higher salaries or we're going to have to just hire an outside maintenance, but we can't have them go into the jail. You know, I, it.
Let me know what building we can use them at.
Yeah.
Have we done any bidding of that sort of thing to see?
A few years ago, a few years ago, and it was Jeff and Chris were here at the time and it was pretty high.
I mean, you save benefits, but I, I don't, but I mean, we're still going to have to have some people to go into some of our secure spaces. You don't.
I think it was still more once we figured out the cost was more than to, to hire more staff and raise the ranges at that time. And I'm sure it's only gotten worse since then.
I'm sure they're in higher demand at the moment as well.
Yes.
But I just, it's, yeah, everybody is looking for, I can't conceive anybody wanting to be a corrections officer at 1549 an hour.
I mean, we're, we're plugging along, but it's.
I agree with you. It affects other people, but when we made adjustments to Public Works, we did not make any adjustments to maintenance. So, I think it's time, I think we should have done it at budget time. I don't think we should have been adding more people. So, I know you're tired of hearing that record skip. But if nothing else, if you got to cut down one person for now and give them some money, I mean, we're kind of looking at some other ideas. But I think you're going to have to raise them up to get anybody here.
I think having Greg start working at 3:00 in the morning to do this because what it comes back on is he, he ends up doing it and.
Last week and a half, I could do one at night and then coming in early in the morning to get another one.
I'm not arguing that a change needs to be made. I just want to make sure that we're looking at all the, the facts of making that change.
And I think some of it may come down to doing some buildings every other day, every third day. Leave a dumpster out in the hallway, people can bring their own trash out if we have to. Mine doesn't need to be emptied every day. Some of them do get up full load every day, so. I don't know if this is the right bid, Greg.
You got to clean the bathrooms every day and really with the COVID and everything, we really need to.
Bathrooms are all getting cleaned now. And I can tell you right now, I'm not dumping every office trash can every day. That's not happening. Time to get through bathrooms clean and doing a little bit of trash. It's an hour, hour and a half. And then come back in the morning and do Carnegie Building and then help over to Courthouse, try to get that one caught up. By then it's 7:30. I know Jordy's meeting with, he's falling behind. We got to get over there and reduce some work. But like I said, I had a guy go home this morning at 7:00 because he's sick. I don't know if he'll be here the rest of the week. So, right now, there's myself and two other guys working for the county out of seven.
Yeah, and if we get too low, we really are going to have to hire a, an outside contractor. I mean, it, eight buildings, right?
Yeah, nine.
Nine.
But I keep forgetting about Public Works.
So I mean, we have to do something.
Well, then you throw in the extra time, especially with bad weather coming up and they gotta start out by clearing sidewalks and all that stuff.
And Greg does that.
I know, that's what I'm saying, but that ties up more time. So what about if we did, for instance, and I'm just talking about the law enforcement center.
Your building's all right. We can do that anytime of the day.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That's what we're gonna do.
If you'd let me finish, Greg, I'm on your side. So if, what if we did go out to bid and we hired out the lawn and the, and the snow removal for our facility? That would free up time where they don't have to worry about, that's one facility on the exterior they wouldn't have to worry about. I mean.
We've talked about doing the mowing before. We didn't include snow removal, I don't think, but you could lump those two things together.
Truthfully, I'm more worried about the ice and snow removal than I am about the mowing.
I see Greg here some Sundays mornings after we've had snow.
You don't worry about that. I got that covered.
And you're gonna have to do it over and over again and put chemicals down again and so.
That's the least of my worries right now.
Well, every little bit counts though, Greg, that's what I'm trying to tell you. So that's why if we did something like that, you could put it in the bid process that, you know, what the timeframe is and when the chemical's gotta be down, all that kinda stuff, so. A lot of people do it, a lot of state buildings do it, and they get cleaned off pretty quick, so I think that would, and if we did it and y'all did it, I mean, that would, that would free up time where you wouldn't have to worry about dealing with short staff cleaning buildings and getting snow or chemical down so people aren't falling down and getting hurt.
Sounds like there's a lot of items beyond just.
Sure.
It's, it's, you know, the general cleaning, so removal, mowing, that maybe look at the whole thing and see what might work best with the complement. You know, it's like. We do need to look at contracting some of this stuff. We consider it at our office, hiring a cleaning service, it needs to be cleaned anyway. It's been neglected just due to fire and terror over the years. Just to the point that we need to be like that, just to start with. We're looking at cleaning services just to handle that, that way you don't empty them down out there.
Yeah, you need a two-inch fire hose on that building.
You write your name in the dust in some places.
Yeah, we made some improvements. Placing some floors and offices.
Yeah.
Beyond, you know, but there's still more work to do, so. We're looking at things as well, just on our facility.
So what's your starting salary?
Just janitor is thirteen fifty, maintenance one is fourteen, and maintenance two is fifteen fifty.
So you go fifteen fifty starting and you're a penny more than a corrections officer.
Do you bump everybody up a buck fifty? See if that helps. You can go two dollars and see if that helps.
I'd say at least two dollars and.
Or do we take a while, so we can go three bucks and see if that really gets somebody in here? I don't know. You know, I mean, if we got everybody, suppose we got high unemployment, where's everybody? You know, I mean, you got Quaker.
They're getting there.
We're on that high unemployment around here. Everybody's looking for everybody like we just said.
I would go up at least two dollars per, per position.
Kristin, how long does it take you to punch the buttons that for two dollars, what it does to maintenance and what it does to everybody else?
Well, I guess it depends on what you want it to do to everyone else. I mean, you wanna know who is below that?
Right, I mean, let's go, let's go to the theory that all our children are equal and we can't, we can't underpay one department or if we.
So you would have like a minimum salary.
Yeah, let's, if, if, Sam says add two, so if you add two to the lowest paid person you have, that's thirteen fifty, plus two is fifteen fifty. What does fifteen fifty do to his department, plus two dollars for those other areas? And what does fifteen fifty do for the rest of the departments?
It would take me a little while, but that would take, that would take starting salary to thirty-two, two forty. I know we have quite a few people that start under that.
We got a lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, health department, front desk people, you have youth specialists at juvenile, deputy auditor.
Got, I don't know, we have, not necessarily starting, but we haven't adjusted years in.
Three years.
Did we do it back then? Okay.
No, we did it.
That was three years ago.
I thought it was two years. We did the separation of, that's how we created your three different people.
Yeah, that was.
Two years ago.
About two years ago. I can't keep track of that.
But, okay, a thirty-two, two forty, but a thirty-two, two forty is really forty-plus after.
With benefits, yes, you're adding at least another forty percent to that.
Okay, so add forty percent to that number. Tell me what that is.
It's another twelve thousand eight ninety-six.
So that's like forty-four grand and change.
Forty-five, one thirty-six.
If you called, and I'm gonna use a offensive term here, Kelly girl, but whatever the, the new Kelly girl is, the temporary, you know, the employment services.
Kelly girl has been used for a long time.
Well, I, but anyway, if you, if you called one of the, one of the temps agencies and said, I need a janitor tomorrow, what's it gonna cost me? What's, what is that number?
It was, if I could find one, I would say we'd be paying at least fourteen, fifteen bucks an hour at minimum.
Didn't you try? Didn't you call CNS or whatever?
I've called a couple companies.
Do they, do they answer the phone and do they send somebody?
What's that?
Do they answer the phone and do they send somebody?
Yes, they've answered the phone in the past. Yes, they have sent somebody.
Is it satisfactory performance?
I've had satisfactory on several of them and a couple of them I sent back to them.
Does that get you out of the current situation?
Would they get me out of the loop? Yes, if I could get somebody to temp serve me.
So when you got that bid that last time, this was shit back in sixteen, it was a lot easier to find. So you have the hourly rate for employee hourly, hourly rate total is fourteen eighty. Who's the IMKO diversified? The state then?
IMCO?
I don't know. I don't remember.
IMCO is like an employment services.
What year was that?
Sixteen.
Do we have a relationship, a business relationship with the temp, temporary agencies in town?
We have used them a few times in the past. It's nothing consistent. We've had certain circumstances where we've had to bring in temporary employees, but it's not very often and I would say the last time we used it was probably Greg.
Yeah, we used them out at EMS when we did the remodel job out there, moved all the shelving and stuff.
So on a staff page charts, it's still showing just maintenance worker one. And I don't know if I got a known one. I think I looked at it in twenty twenty, or for the twenty twenty.
Does state government no longer hire?
Haven't.
The kind of folks we're hiring or the classification?
Yes, they do. They still hire maintenance workers and custodians.
But, but if you would go to the Capitol today, you're gonna see a, an employee who doesn't work for state government doing that work.
Some buildings are hired through cleaning services.
Right. Okay. What do they know that we don't know?
I, that I couldn't answer you. I, I think they just take anybody they can get, as long as they pass a background check and a drug test, will take anything. I don't know. And I think from what Sam was saying, some other companies are hurting for employees too.
Yeah, Sam Riegel's a friend of mine. He was in a lot of, Chris, he can't find people to work.
Does a change of what Sam mentioned, does that upset existing employees that are below that? Or does that take care, I mean, are we taking care of?
Well, if we did two dollars, it'd be across the board. And, and then the two percent raise that you all had in there, we take that out.
Okay, yeah.
That's your decision. I think we've done that in the past years, given the raise and not given the COLA.
No.
No.
The opinion's always been if you're giving a COLA, it's across the board. We have played with whether or not you give an adjustment after the COLA and you include the COLA as part of their adjustment. If you're doing an adjustment for more than.
Maybe that's what I'm thinking of.
We have to do something, so.
I just want to put that out there for you guys to discussion, so whatever we come up with would be great.
So when we bid, and I think this is the last time, this was in fifteen when we did the bond loan services and what's we've done since then, but. We did different yards, we just call it different yards. But we were, we were over a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand was the lowest cost by cherry picking. It's not cheap to do that. Now, that did include the parks as well, so that would affect some of the works, so.
Didn't we also have some properties on there before that we've gotten rid of, like?
It's fairly small.
Rins Lake?
Yeah.
O.S.A. City lots.
O.S.A. City lots and.
Yeah, but those I think broke out separates in the bids, if I remember right.
So it don't, that'll reduce it that much, so.
It was a hundred thousand back in twenty fifteen?
Twenty fifteen, we're at a hundred and twenty-five thousand and that was the lowest cost by cherry picking. We did it in three different bunches.
Yeah, I mean.
So that's six years ago. That's, it's.
Well, it seems like there's a lot more of them out there now. I might go get some lower bids. But like John said, you're gonna, every little thing you can do to take off your plate is that much less you gotta do. We don't have to maintain the mowers. We don't have to store them.
Have you looked at more part-time people? I mean.
I got one application and it's been in our system for five weeks now. It's been in payment for three and I've gotten one.
Have you tried Indeed or any of the online application services that?
Those really don't do that much good. I mean, you get people that are asked about it, because we're in the same boat. We get people that will ask and then you'll tell them and then you never hear from them again, so, and they're from California and Georgia and all these other places.
The one I got, it's from St. Louis and it was through Indeed and he wants twenty-eight dollars an hour.
I just didn't know if maybe you had people that are looking for part-time work more than full-time. I don't know.
I've asked.
That worked out really well.
Right, right.
I've asked for part-time people that I know that are full-time. To me, it doesn't matter. If I get two, instead of doing one full-time, I'll do two part-times. It's about a wash.
I mean, because you could up the part-time salary and save the benefits and, you know.
That's what I did on email too, but I can't get them. It doesn't matter.
Right, right.
That's where I was going with some of the calculations. When you compare the true cost, the, the best experience I ever had was finding a retired couple who worked about three hours a day each, but they're hard to find.
Yeah, a lot of them don't wanna work anymore. They just tune to golf and fish or play golf.
Well, there's still twenty-one hours a day left after you've worked for three, so there's plenty of time to play golf.
You can play a lot of golf in twenty-one hours.
I, I think we try moving the salaries up to see if that helps. It can't hurt nothing. If it doesn't help, then we're back to square one and I reach out to the temp services and see what they're gonna cost. Or we reach out to the cleaning service and see what those are gonna cost.
Yeah, and we might have to do that too, just, yeah, it's probably gonna be like the grass cutting now, it's gonna be, but.
Grass cutting, yeah. Right now, we're doing, we start at seven thirty, we're done with grass cutting by eleven. That's with two mowers and four guys, we're done.
If you wanted a dollar and a half, it'd be fifteen dollars an hour, which is.
Salary's still showing to all of maintenance workers. I thought we changed that up to where you had maintenance workers.
We did. We got this total, maintenance one and maintenance two.
That's where he has the thirteen fifty, fourteen and the fifteen fifty.
And then part-time, whatever, part-time I think is fourteen fifty already.
Has that thirteen fifty actually gone up by two percent? Or?
Well.
Not yet.
We, we normally don't, so the COLA doesn't necessarily carry forward to the starting salary, so we're not upping the starting salaries with the COLA. But you could, you could say that you're, you're going to add the two percent to the starting.
Well, I thought you previously said that COLA's for everybody.
It is, so all of its current employees. So it was in there if, if the positions were filled, they got two percent.
You're talking about, yeah, you're talking about new employees and.
Right, so if you have an open position, we're not adding the two percent to an open position. We're starting with the starting salary, which isn't changing. We've.
So if you add a dollar, the existing employees that we have would get that dollar plus they already got their COLA.
It's not yet.
So a, a maintenance one who started in December is, is going, is going to fourteen dollars plus two percent.
Correct.
All right, and then one who starts in January is, starts at fourteen dollars.
Right.
All right.
We've done it both ways. We've gotten ourselves into trouble both ways as well.
That's how you get in compression.
Right, so we, we've done it where we've moved it with, with the COLA every time. Well, if you go years without giving a COLA, then you have someone who has two or three years of service and they're making the exact same thing as the person that walks in the door. So we've backed off of that now and if the position is not full at January one or the date that the COLA is given, that position does not get the two percent or whatever the COLA is. It stays at the starting rate.
Right, but under my example, you have maintenance one A and maintenance one B, don't you?
Maybe.
Well, you have a maintenance one is fourteen dollars, but you have maintenance one people making fourteen twenty-eight.
Right. But that person is, was also here.
I understand, but, but it's, so when somebody says, what do you pay maintenance one? Well, if they start today, we'll pay them fourteen, but if they've been here prior to one-one-twenty-one, it's fourteen twenty-eight, if that's my math is right, okay. well, if they start today, we'll pay them 14, but if they've been here prior to 1121, it's 1428, if that's my math is right, okay.
Well, and I think actually, his budget has more money in it, because his person that retired, I did not know about. So their salary is in there at what rate they were making plus 2%. So it's a snapshot in time as to what's in the budget at that particular moment.
At a time like this, you either lead, follow, or get out of the way. So I'm not gonna lead, I will follow and get out of the way, so I'm looking for leadership here.
Well, I think we need to increase the salary, because we're not gonna bring anybody in.
And like I said, if I can find two part-times, I'll do it that way too, either way.
But I mean, we can increase the salary, we can, in the meantime, check with some of the agencies to see if we can get some temps.
Maybe I can find...
We can get prices from cleaning services too, I mean, so you do all three. But I think you need to go up at least to $15, or 1550, or, you know, I just...
Where's it at right now, again, we've had so many numbers thrown around.
He has three positions, he has a 1350, a $14, and a 1550, are the startings.
1450.
So it's a dollar in between each one?
Yes. And I think, part-time is 1450, I think, I can't remember.
How much?
I don't have the scale in front of me.
I think part-time is 1450 or 1425, something like that.
I'd pay part-time more money and get more interest in it, because we're not... We're saving a lot with them, because we're not paying benefits on them, so I would draw that.
You could raise part-time by about 20, about, now let's just say 20% or something, and you're still under full-time with benefits.
Right.
Will any of your full-time benefited people ask for part-time at that point?
Good question.
Maybe I'll steal from public works if we go up and...
Chelsea, can you ask Jessica to come in? I wanna know, so we just bid out the cleaning over at the courthouse with CARES money. I know that it was like a deep cleaning, but I wanna know what we were paying to bring in that service.
About like $4,000 or so?
Maybe something like that.
I think it was not to exceed 40,000, but I don't know what, how many people and what hourly amount we were talking about. Hey, when we did cleaning over at the courthouse, were we paying so many people in an hourly amount per person? Or was it like bundled together to have them come in and clean it with so much? Was it per hour, was it per day?
Per hour. I think it had four or five employees in there, and then we were paying them per hour.
Do you know what that hourly amount was? Yeah, if you don't mind.
Do they bring their own equipment when they do this deep cleaning?
I think they do, I don't think we're providing...
I thought we supplied cleaning supplies and stuff. Because we were a ton of cleaning supplies.
Well, what about the equipment itself?
Buffers and stuff, I think they used the one we had over there.
Okay. So it was strictly labor we were buying?
Given our cleaning supply usually going up the last few months quite a bit for window acts and furniture polish and Lysol and total bowl cleaner.
So all the positions you have open are the 1350, janitor positions?
Yes, because I'm gonna move one of employees up to maintenance two, and then I... I can't move the other two, I have janitor, so I'll have to be maintenance one, I'll have to hire maintenance one.
So do you have people that are maintenance workers essentially that don't wanna apply for a janitor job? Or you just having problems legally?
I have nobody apply, Jeff. It's in the papers, custodial and maintenance.
The folks that were on the ladder yesterday...
Those are my employees.
Right? And they were, I mean, removing the Christmas?
They're maintenance ones.
Maintenance ones.
On that screen, Jeff, is the...
Oh, I've got, this one's got all maintenance worker ones on it, yeah. That's what you currently have, then, you're saying?
Yes.
Oh, that's the steps for...
This is the starting salary, and then you wanna see what he currently has?
You had six plus yourself, right, Harry?
Yes. Well, and a part-time.
And a part-time, okay.
This is his current list of positions?
Yeah, you don't have my part-time on there.
Well, this is just full-time people?
Okay, I was just asking if you had maintenance people that just did not wanna come in as janitor pay, and if we had to bump them up to make them all maintenance. But right now, you're not getting anything.
No, truly, not a...
So he currently has three people at maintenance worker two. I mean, I guess you could say the other three are going to move to a maintenance worker two, but that gets rid of the separation we created before.
Okay, Princess.
I thought that was a possibility, because there was some coming in as... Just custodial work, not necessarily playing electric or plumbing.
Like cleaning stuff and equipment, or do they use ours? I'm pretty sure they do. That's what I thought too. I thought they had their own cart and supplies and everything. That's what I thought, but...
I don't know, I wasn't involved, believe me. I know where you see John cleaning supplies still, the last two months.
I might have you an applicant working on there right now.
Send him my wagon.
Well, I think part-time can be, can be, you know, a partial solution, if you can get part-time.
Bodies with heartbeats.
Yeah, she could be, she could be, and she's helped my wife, my wife owns cleaning business, can she help serve?
I don't discriminate.
Okay, well, she's gonna send me her resume, but I'll tell her to apply online, might be some help.
Yep, I mean, that'll work.
Tell her, pack her lunch, come on in.
Bring your wife in too.
Well, mom, to go back to that, my wife owns a cleaning business. She, on all the contracts that she does, and she mainly does just Boone County, and she's kinda fell out of that recently, because she got a full-time job. But they always supply all of their own cleaning.
I was gonna say, I think most of those services, that's part of the cost.
Mostly they do, but I think it's all about how you write the contract. You know, you can write it both ways, and we'll supply your cleaning stuff. All you gotta do is show up, you pay an hourly rate, or you just pay them a flat rate, and they have to supply everything, and you kinda wash your hands of it.
This would be the cost if you added $2 an hour to every person in that department? 29, 120 is the cost of $2 an hour.
I'd be more apt to go a dollar, start with a dollar to play with that and see where that gets us. Look at some more part-time, try to look at some more, paying part-time more. Try to look at maybe bidding it out, and seeing what some cleaning would be.
So a dollar an hour would be $2,080 per person?
Right, she's looking for full-time or part-time?
Full-time. She's currently unemployed.
Oh.
Okay, that works.
Yeah.
Yeah, she would look for the benefits, it would be her big thing, but...
But I'd still, here's, nothing against, if I do hire her to clean, I still need a maintenance person that can do other stuff. With the one that's retired.
But I think you can analyze, isn't it, if they come in as a...
Well, so I thought you had someone you were moving up into the one that...
I am moving one up to maintenance two, but I still have two positions.
Which two positions are open, right? You have a...
Full-time, well, full-time custodial will be open, or maintenance one.
Is it which one? Custodial worker two, or is it a maintenance one open?
One employee is going from maintenance one to maintenance two. He's earned it with what he's done over the, this year.
So then you have a maintenance worker one position and a custodial worker open?
Right, which if...
So you could advertise the maintenance worker one at the 1450 an hour? Are you advertising everything currently at the 1350?
I don't have a salary in there, I don't have a wage in there. All I have in there right now is custodial maintenance worker for Colcany, apply.
So, so you're not even getting any applications, and they don't know what the starting salary is?
Yeah.
So I don't know that the starting salary is necessarily the issue, it's the people that don't want to be open maintenance worker or custodial worker. I mean, because if they don't know what the salary is at the moment, and they're not applying, then salary isn't necessarily the issue.
Pick up a phone and call it too, if they wanna know. Or do they even wanna work?
Well, I mean, that's what I'm saying, I don't know that the money is the issue, it's the title or the work that they don't want to do.
I'm gonna make a motion here, and you're either gonna shoot it or salute it, all right? So, I'm gonna authorize, and the sense of the commission is to do three things here. Raise the salaries in the maintenance area by a dollar an hour. Authorize the hiring of part-time, non-benefited employees at an hourly rate of 110% of the benefited rate. And inquire with service providers about contract cleaning.
So, question?
Hold on, that's a motion, right?
That's a motion, now we can start shooting.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, good.
Harry, can I add something else to that? If I, like, all right, I'm gonna put devil's advocate, I hire Brian's friend full-time, that leaves me a part-time. If I find a maintenance one worker who wants full-time, do I have your permission to bring him on full-time instead of paying him part-time?
Does it fit within the budget? The overall budget for the...
Okay, let's go through this scenario, you have two open positions.
Right.
You're going to bring one in full-time.
Full-time as a custodial worker.
Right, and you have someone else that applies that wants full-time?
Full-time, and he's qualified to do maintenance one, do I have the option to hire him or not?
So right now, it looks like yes, you have a dollar more an hour for your full-time positions. If you can hire the two full-time, the rest of it's moot point, right?
As long as it fits within the budget we previously adopted.
So the other option would be if you can't find a full-time person to fit that person, you could hire part-time for the rate to fill the amount that you have in the budget with part-time employees instead?
What he's asking is if he's got a custodian position open, and you got somebody come in that qualifies as a maintenance, can he hire it as a maintenance worker?
I think he has a maintenance worker one position open.
I've got a maintenance one worker open right now. Because I'm moving one of my guys to maintenance two for the one individual that left. The one that is leaving me in next week is a part-time employee who works 25 hours a week. If I hire, I'm just using this devil, Brian's, and she, or he, he or she has made a custodial one worker, I still need a maintenance person to do stuff other than clean.
Yes.
If I find a person that is qualified as a maintenance one, but he wants full-time work, do I have your permission to hire him as a maintenance one worker full-time?
Okay, I'm still confused, so you have two...
I do away with the part-time person.
Why are you gonna, why are you gonna do away with the part-time that's in the budget already? You have two open full, and you want...
I've got one open full and one part-time.
I thought you were down two and a half people.
Three and a half slash...
Well, I've got people out on medical and everything else, and I got one on today. We can't keep doing this.
So you really only have one and a half positions open?
I'm one and a half open right now, but we keep having people out with COVID, medical, and we can't keep you cleaning the buildings. I'm not working the hours anymore.
I thought you said you were down three and a half people, and that...
I am three and a half right now.
So you were down three and a half, and meaning, we did not have those employees?
I am three and a half people down right now.
Not because they were sick on vacation that day or whatever, so...
The misunderstanding here is when you're down three and a half, you're counting people who called in sick today.
Correct.
Some might interpret to being down three and a half is per your roster, you're down three and a half.
Down per my roster.
Okay, there we go.
Right now, I've got two out on medical, which, I don't know what I'm getting them back.
I got misunderstood about that.
Right.
Because I thought you had, we just had one retire, we've had one resign, and so I thought that's what you're saying. You were down one and a half before them, so now you're gonna be down three and a half whenever they're...
I'm three and a half down right now.
But you have two of those that are coming back?
Hopefully coming back.
It's the hour, right?
Five to two.
5:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Shouldn't be flexible if you're done cleaning, huh?
I can work around it if you want.
That's one thing, if somebody's part-time wants to supplement their income a little bit, they can cut...
See what, see what you can find.
Okay, so, I don't know, this changes a lot of thinking on that part now, because I thought you were down three and a half.
Right.
But I am down three and a half.
You wanna mull this over and come back?
I'll withdraw my motion at this point.
Okay.
I guess you have to withdraw your second, too.
I'll withdraw my second too, that's what I was asking about, hold on to withdrawal, or...
Yeah, well, never mind.
I think, but part of it though, too, is to still check into the part-time, and I think Harry's on the right track there with that. To be able to pay non-benefited part-timers more than what we'd be paying a benefited position. And even if it's more than 10%.
And if, I think if you need to supplement during the time when you have people off and things, maybe the part-time is the answer. So if you could fill in with part-time, especially when you're down people because of illness or whatever...
You know what, forget it, we'll just do what we got, I'm not, you know... We'll make it work with what we got, get it?
No, I think we need to...
So we're down to part-time, and we're down to maintenance or custodial workers?
Down to maintenance.
Maintenance worker.
Maintenance one.
Even after you promote the custodian to the maintenance?
He's promoting a maintenance one to a maintenance two.
Okay, so it's hopefully one to two, so it's still maintenance worker.
Well, I would, I still would go with Harry's to increase it by a dollar an hour, because I think with the salaries we're paying, we're, so I would, I...
Make a motion.
I, I would make a motion that we increase maintenance employees by a dollar an hour.
Second.
Discussion?
I still think we need to mull it over, I think we've got some other options here, and... You're just doing the maintenance workers, not even the custodial workers?
Well, I mean, it's...
It's everybody.
It's everybody, yes, it's, it's, I don't think 1350 you're going to...
I don't disagree with that, but I was thinking we were down three and a half people so far, I mean... I was thinking we're down three and a half people so far, I made that move all the way across the board, maybe just eliminate the.
Jeff, you don't understand.
Janitorial person and just have all maintenance people at the fourteen fifty. So.
Jeff, you don't, maybe I'm not presenting to you guys, when I lose one person. That's eight hours for one building. I lose two people, that's another building. I have one retire that didn't even tell me he was retiring, so there's a third building. And a part time, that's another building, out of nine buildings. My people are scrambling to get the buildings cleaned, to keep everybody happy. Yes, maybe I did mislead you by saying three and a half people, but that's what.
You didn't, you didn't mislead us, we just misunderstood, yeah, there was no misleading going on.
I'm not mad about it, I'm just saying, I want to rethink some different ideas here, because I thought we were having troubles just filling positions, but.
We still are having problems filling positions. Can't get anybody to apply, I can't hire anybody.
That's why I'm looking at part time, I think that's a.
Even at part time.
So let, let's talk about this though, so the, the current maintenance worker one in the, in the budget has the COVA on there. So really, there is funding in the budget currently that you could bring in the open full time position at fifteen dollars an hour. That money is currently in the budget.
And we've got one retired that's not gonna be filled right away, we've got another one and a half that haven't been filled yet, so.
But maybe the answer is you need to have more part time staff in general for those days and movement of people calling in sick or taking a day of vacation. Maybe you need kind of a floater maintenance person.
That's what I put in the budget for last year and it was kicked out.
Okay, so what do we, what do we pay the part time?
I think you could pay the part time person a little more per hour to entice someone to come and work part time. You're not paying them the benefits that you're paying the full time person.
So sixteen dollars an hour?
It's, it's still way below benefited.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I, I.
I mean, even if you leave the top person at fifteen fifty an hour plus ten percent.
Seventeen and change.
Dollar fifty-five more an hour, so it would be.
Seventeen oh five.
Seventeen oh five an hour? I mean, have you thought, I mean, the part time people, are they gonna be doing more custodial stuff?
Yes.
So have you, I mean, even like a.
I've kicked the idea out of just hiring all part time people.
Well, even kids out of high school, like a couple of hours after school to come in and help you empty trash for the day or, you know, mop the floor or.
Where are you throwing out there? Seventeen?
Seventeen oh five would be.
Seventeen oh five? So I think that's what you gotta do, is you gotta put something out there, you gotta put a carrot out there that's. I don't know, maybe even put caramel around that carrot, make it really, that kind of thing.
Pie? Sheriff pies and pie?
Pie?
Pie? Well, we need to do something, is basically what it comes down to. So. I don't know, we have a motion, but.
So then you're gonna have maintenance, or public works don't want to come in and raise theirs up too, so, because they've got something making under that, so be ready for that.
Well, we can do away with.
Sitting there listening to it right now, making notes. I don't know, Cherokee, you've got it all up here.
It's, it's a different department.
Well, the, I guess part time would be the, the main.
Do you require a CDO?
No.
You gotta be reading.
Maybe I'll go work with you guys.
I, I will. Withdraw my motion and, but.
I withdraw the second, I think, if I made it.
Play around with that, Greg, and let's see what, we can maybe do some part time.
So he currently has one part time in the budget. Do you want to give him the ability to hire more than one part time person?
Sure.
Yes, but here. It goes back to what I said a while ago. If I hire one person to do custodial work only, who has no knowledge of maintenance, I still need a maintenance one.
Well, yeah, we're not, we're not, we're taking one thing at a time. You, you, you need some custodial staff. If, if you could hire somebody at seventeen dollars and five cents an hour and there's flexible hours, you're gonna make this work, they come in at four thirty and work till seven thirty on a, building A. That's their job. There's probably somebody out there would be willing to do it at that cost. That takes care of one of your little, not little, one of your big problems. Let's go to problem two, it's another building and you find the ident, the person for that one.
I guess we're, I'm, the individual that Brian's coming in, she just is, is a custodial worker. She's wanting full time work.
Right.
I hire her for full time work.
Right.
I still need a full time maintenance person.
Understand, we're, we're not, we're not discussing that maintenance person right now, we're talking custodial, let's get one thing done at a time.
It's fine.
All right, and, and perhaps she.
She might.
This, this person might be building A, B, and C. I don't know. You've gonna, you've got flexibility there to make that happen, so, but let's.
Depending on, yeah, depending on the time we work her, work her camp. Yeah. If we bring them in at four thirty and they want to work till midnight or whatever, yes. We can get more than one building clean, we can get two buildings, maybe three.
So does it, what, what's it take for us up here to, to authorize this seventeen dollars and five cents? For part time, unbenefited?
Yes, you can, you can vote to change the part time salary of a maintenance worker to seventeen oh five an hour?
I think it's custodial.
Custodial worker?
She's gonna apply.
And then you probably need to give.
Thanks, Brian.
He has one part time person open at the moment. You want it to stay at one or?
Well, but, but if, if you've got one part timer working six hours or two part timers working three hours, that, that's the same thing. Right. So it's just hours that, so, I mean, you could literally have a bunch of them working. So, let's authorize, uh, this is a motion to authorize seventeen dollars and five cents per hour, part time, unbenefited custodial workers. For maintenance department.
Second. Any other discussion?
That we can try to do to start with.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's one.
And then they can have, up to how many hours, part time?
So.
Well theoretically, it's just under a thousand, it's a thousand hours a year for, if it's one person.
So, yes, so currently there's a thousand hours at twelve fifty an hour, so we could up that to a thousand hours at seventeen oh five.
We can use money from the, the positions we have and for the difference in salary from the person retired, so we're, we'll be all right with that in the budget.
At the moment, yes, unless you make other changes.
We wouldn't do that.
But we need to stay under thirty hours a week, so we don't hit that twenty, under the twenty-nine, so you don't have, because you have to provide benefits if they work more than twenty-nine hours per week on average, so. You have to stay under the twenty-nine hours a week.
If it's one person.
If it's one person, yes.
And, you know, if you, if you have two people doing this, it's, it's still twenty-nine per person, but basically you could work two people twenty-three hours each, whatever.
Until you get to the thousand hours.
Right, right.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else? You got anything, Jeffrey?
I gotta tell you, but I need to. I need to get a little voice.
Do you want recess till four thirty, or you want to recess just while you?
I got some emails I need to go through that we, I think there were questions on the stuff, I don't even know where to start with them.
Okay.
I had text care a couple of emails. So then I think Jill emailed about the lobbyist saying, are we gonna do a contract for six months?
Yes.
With the intention of doing it for six months after that or?
Well, that was guaranteed.
Something after. Okay, so are they getting us a contract then for that?
I can modify, modify what, just change the dates. Send Tom.
We talked about Judge Beadham's stuff, we talked about. Have set sales tax and stuff, so clears up a few of them. And I figured out the lobbyist's name.
Are you guys going to send out a letter to the departments about requesting cares money?
Yes, and I, I think we, we should actually, you know, send out a letter to the departments and elected officials that say. We're temporarily having issues with respect to custodial slash maintenance, please be patient and, uh, work with the maintenance department. Because of their, the absence of employees due to blah, blah, blah.
So someone's doing a letter regarding maintenance and someone's doing a letter regarding requesting cares?
Yes.
Okay.
I move we adjourn and stand in recess until four thirty.
All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Withdrawn.
Build outs, were those, do they need to go through cares or are those coming out? Because the last time we thought, the extension hadn't been granted, so I just need to know, do we submit those or not?
No, so currently they are coming out of your capital and they were carried forward in the budget in capital.
Okay, cool.
And that's where your money, the additional money that got sent over for salaries is, so I think that part of it, we're just gonna leave alone.
Okay, thank you.
In reference to the maintenance, is it okay with you if I test the waters and just see how much it would be to go up the bid for our lawn and for snow removal? I can do that, try to do that pretty quick, just to see what kind of money comes back?
Sure.
Don't try anything at this point.
Yeah.
I think we need to look at a lot of different options and.
Yes, sir.
So.
Alrighty, so we had the motion on the floor, we'll vote now, if that's it?
To recess at four thirty?
Stand in recess.
I think, yeah, I made that motion.
Harry made that motion.
Yeah, and I'd second it or third it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Where'd Little Debbie go?